All right, call's meeting order. Um, everybody join me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pleasure to meet you.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask everybody to remain standing for a moment of silence for the unexpected passing of our fellow board member, Brian Geisweit. All right, thank you. All right, roll call.
Mr. Backus?
Here.
Mrs. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. D. Francesco? Mr. Giraud?
Here.
Mr. Gulick?
He was here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
He looks back for more food.
All right, um, recommend approval of the meeting minutes from the October 7th work session and October 10th board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, we have a couple announcements, presentations, but I'd just like, um, this past week, we had the, uh, CTC National Technical Honor Society down at the, uh, Technical Center, and, uh, just like to announce the names of the new members honored at the ceremony on, uh, October 30th. Joey Blake, Ben Berger, Logan Churchill, Hannah Manoros, Lucas Messner, Elizabeth Morris, Aurora Phillips, Haley Rule, Megan Sinovic, Aaron Tomcho, Colin York, Tanner Zaccido. And just as a note, Pencrest had more, had the majority of the, uh, National Technical Honor Society members inducted, so congratulations to all of them for their hard work. Also, the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Board Association proudly presents certificate of appreciation to the following school directors for their years of service. So PSBA has been recognizing contribution of dedicated local school directors with long-term service since 1983. The honor roll is the association's way of saying thank you to those individuals who exemplified leadership by giving unselfishly of their time and talents for the betterment of the public schools serving students across this great Commonwealth. It gives me immense pleasure to recognize you for your service and thank you for being part of this rich legacy. Jason Backus for eight years of service. And congratulations to Luigi D. Francesco for eight years of service as well. All right, we have, uh, presentations evening. Uh, Mr. Zercher, I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you take it from here.
Okay. So last year through the encouragement of our administration, uh, I applied for an in-district grant, uh, for technology, uh, and one of the things that, uh, I was interested in, they were interested in us acquiring, was a, a set of virtual reality goggles. So in front of all of you, you have, uh, uh, virtual reality goggles. Inside there's a, a phone that's housed inside of it, uh, that's controlled by this tablet. So, uh, right now, I'll go ahead and start up the first one, so if you want to take a peek in as I'm talking, you can, uh, go ahead and do that. Uh, currently, as you look in there, you're twenty-three, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty feet above, uh, the earth, looking down, uh, at the earth below. Uh, so we use these as a tool to, uh, I use it specifically for geography, uh, as I'm teaching the kids about different places, uh, different experiences, different cultures. Um, so this is a, a presentation that I would use as we start to learn about geography. Uh, if you get motion sickness, or if you, uh, are the type of person who's scared of heights, this is sometimes not for the faint of heart. I had a few kids that got a little boozy on the first day, so I just told them to take a break if you need to, so if you need to give your eyes a rest, you can do that.
You can't fly, you can't fly a ceiling too low.
That's right. So we can, uh, quickly go to different locations, you're gonna see a new location come up now, you're at Angel Falls in, uh, in Venezuela. Uh, so as you look around, and you can look the full three-hundred-and-sixty degrees, you can look behind you, um, I can also draw your attention to different things, uh, so you'll see a white arrow pop up on your screen, it's drawing your attention now to the actual falls themselves, uh, so you'll see Angel Falls there in Venezuela. Uh, we know that, you know, kids that, a lot of the kids that live in our district won't have the opportunity to travel to some of these places and experience these things, so this is about as close as you're gonna get without a really expensive field trip. Uh, so it's kind of a cool experience. I have used them in the classroom already, uh, and the kids love them. Uh, you get some great responses from them, some deeper responses than you get, uh, if you don't take them to these places and give them a chance to see them. Uh, you know, it's more than just a yes or no, they really get to take in the sights and see what's around them. Uh, I could show you one more location, uh, this is, if we were studying human geography and learning about different cultures, this is the inside of the Buddhist temple, uh, so you'll see some of them inside of the temple there, um, and just the, the bright, the good colors, the, you know, the completely different culture, different look to anything that they're going to see or experience, uh, here in, uh, Crawford County, that's for sure. Um, so I appreciate, uh, the board supporting those grants and the technology department supporting me as I've been working, uh, with the equipment. Uh, it has huge applications outside of social studies and geography, uh, you can travel inside the human body, you can go through the entire respiratory system inside of a cell, uh, different weather systems you can take a look at, so, uh, we just wanted to take an opportunity to kind of show you, uh, what we're doing with the technology and how we're using it in the classroom, and also could be a chance to say thank you guys for supporting these kind of things, uh, giving us the chance to do it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll leave them set up, so if anyone wants to check it out afterwards tonight, you're welcome to stop by, and, you know, we can go to whatever location you'd like to go to.
Anybody in the audience want to say go up?
Yeah, and I'll leave, like I said, I'll leave them set up, so if you want to check them out after the meeting, so we'll give you a chance to do that, so, thank you. No, no line, sorry.
Couple of public address, um, we have some student delegation representatives, CJ, senior from Cambridge Springs.
I'm Cambridge, and here's some, uh, some of the things we've been doing at the school since, uh, the beginning of the year, getting used to the new system. We had a homecoming assembly organized by our student senate program, homecoming dance, a nine-eleven all-school remembrance assembly, where local VFW members, veterans, law enforcement officers were in attendance, a mental health awareness volleyball match, a Halloween dance put on by our National Honor Society, a Blue Devil Nation Games, where kids from the elementary school and the high school came together and played a bunch of games, had some fun, and we also had the Veterans Day Assembly this past week on Friday. And then fall sports for football, our team finished three and seven this year, uh, injury bug hit 'em pretty hard. Girls volleyball went seven and seven, and they lost to Conrington in semifinals of the district playoffs. Cross-country went seven and one, and had six runners qualify for states, and we had one golf member also qualify for states. We also have teams starting back up, they've been pretty successful in the past, and winter sports are gonna kick off on Monday.
Thank you CJ. Sagertown senior Josh, hand conference.
Good evening, my name is Josh Weaver, and I'm the sports editor for the Panther Press. I'd like to bring you up to speed on what's been happening at Sagertown High School. The Sagertown community held a Veterans Day Assembly on Monday morning, many veterans attended with their families. Sagertown Elementary School music teacher, Jason Ashbrow, organized this event. School board member Jeff Brooks was one of several speakers who shared some thoughts on the importance of service. Pantherium Key Club raised three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and forty-eight cents in the penny war to donate to Post-52's project to support our troops. This donation will help defray the cost of sending packages to deploy troops. Four Panther Press staffers, Sam Schellenberger, Dana Woodruff, Paisley Mangold, and Josie Nieder, qualified for the state journalism championship in March at Penn State. On October 30th, the band and chorus presented an autumn concert of American folk tunes. The show featured musicians in grave nine through twelve, and the donations collected will be used to help fund the music department's spring trip. Sagertown hosts a Division One wrestling match between Edinburgh University and the University of Wisconsin on November 8th. Four Pencrest graduates, Cody Mulligan, Tyler Bath, Dylan Reynolds, and Ty Vardell wrestled for Edinburgh in front of a packed house. Looking ahead, the Pencrest variety show will be November 22nd at Cambridge Springs High School and December 4th at Sagertown High School. Please join us to see touted acts from all three Pencrest schools. Show starts at 7:00 PM. The next issue of the Panther Press will be released November 26th. Sagertown High School would like to offer condolences to the family of school board member, Brian Geisweit. Thank you Brian for your service to Pencrest, you'll be missed. Thank you for your time, and please follow us on Twitter and Instagram, at Panther Press S H S.
Excellent Josh. PAE representative remarks.
Well, we're finished with the first nine weeks, and we had, uh, parent conferences, and it's a very important time for, uh, families to meet with teachers and learn about their students' achievement. Uh, we're on to the second nine weeks, and it's a lot, it's still an extra week until Thanksgiving, so the kids are getting a little tired, but, you know, they'll stay with us. Uh, and on behalf of, um, Penrose Area Education Association, I would like to extend our condolences to family of Brian Geisweit. Uh, he was selflessly, selflessly serviced community for years, uh, there's a void with his passing, and we wish, um, we extend our best apologies to him.
Thank you. Any registered comments?
No.
All right, we're gonna begin with the agenda. Athletic committee, Mr. Gulick chairman. Item A, recommend approval to accept the resignations of the following coaches as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, recommend approval to employ the following coaches as listed?
On behalf of the committee, I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, athletic travel, recommend approval of the following athletic travel as listed?
On behalf of the committee, I'm sorry. On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
She's in a hurry to see the stewardess.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Education committee, Mr. Brooks chairman.
That was your first.
Recommend approval of the Pencrest School District Comprehensive Plan to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education in accordance with chapters four, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, and forty-nine.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, recommend approval of an affiliation agreement with Edinburgh University of Pennsylvania for educational experience in the area of counseling as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, recommend approval of memorandum of understanding by and between Children and Youth Services of Inango County, PA, and the Pencrest School District as attached?
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, student travel, recommend approval of the student travel as listed?
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, recommend approval of the conference travel as listed?
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item A, Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston chairman. Recommend approval of the bid proposal from Tom Bound Performance Floors Incorporated for gym floor resurfacing at Cambridge High School, Maplewood High School, and Sagertown as listed and attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, recommend approval of quotation from Ikenlob Corporation for bleacher install at Maplewood Junior Senior High School as attached?
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, recommend approval of the quotation for CM Ikenlob for bleacher installation at Sagertown Junior Senior High School as attached?
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, recommend approval to purchase Transfinder bus routing software as attached?
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, recommend approval to donate the scoreboard-located Sagertown High School baseball field to the Hayfield Township Youth League.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, recommend approval of the bus contracts with PM Bus and RD Wycoff as listed. PM Bus, two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents each month from November through May. Wycoff, forty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and one cent each month, uh, from November through May.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item G, recommend approval of Jessica Stitt as a contracted student transportation driver for PM Bus Incorporated upon submission of required clearances.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Finance committee, Mr. Brown chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the treasurer's reports as attached?
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, recommend approval of the disbursements as attached?
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, recommend approval of the June 30, 2019 single audit report as presented at the November 11, 2019 work session and attached. Uh, please note, this is on our website, um, and it was a clean audit, no findings.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Personnel committee, Mrs. Dean chairperson, I'd like to have a consent agenda for items A, B, C, D, and E, uh, for one motion.
On behalf of the committee, I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Policy committee, Mr. D. Francesco chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the policies as attached. Policy 208, withdraw from school, 217 dot one, add drop course policy, 805, emergency preparedness, 807, opening exercises and flag displays, 814, copyright material.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, first reading of policies as listed and attached. Policy 004, membership, 201, admission of students, 204, attendance, 808, group service. This does not require a vote. Safe, uh, school safety committee, Mr. Backus chairman. Recommend approval authorizing administration to submit an application for the PCD, PCCD, meritorious and competitive grants as discussed on October 10, 2019, to include but not limited to Raptor Emergency Management System, automatic external defibrillators and accessories, lock sets and deadbolts, costs associated with the parent reunification training, a one-barrel metal detector, and a door access system.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
You know what, can I add lighting to that?
Lighting for Maplewood?
Just exterior lighting?
Yes.
All right, can you move, put that in the minutes, because I have to submit it for minutes. All right? So we'll try to, if, if there's, if we're ready to do exterior lighting in certain places.
Yes.
Such as here.
Here.
All right, such as, such as Maplewood, any elementary schools as well, so we'll add that into the minutes and I'll be able to submit that. So thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Crawford County Career Technology Center report, Mr. Johnson representative.
I'm, uh, I read the, uh, the Tech, uh, National Honor Society, tech students, and again, congratulations to them and all their hard work. Intermediate Unit Five, report, Mr. Brooks representative?
Um, the, the most interesting takeaway from the meeting, where they discussed the substitute shortage and statewide teacher shortage, um, the predictions are by 2025, there'll be three-hundred-and-thirty thousand teaching jobs available statewide, not just in Pencrest, and only a hundred-and-ninety thousand teachers available for work, so.
Thank you. PSBA legislative report, Mr. Gulick representative?
I do have one item that came across my desk today, and it really needs attention soon. Um, on Monday, November 18th, which is this coming Monday, obviously, the House Education Committee is scheduled to vote on a voucher legislation bill, uh, which is House Bill 1800. House Bill 1800 established the voucher program for students in the Harrisburg School District, which entered state receivership in June. The legislation sets a precedent for expansion in other districts, and in fact, using the definitions in the bill, there are thirteen school districts that would qualify for this voucher program, and it could go on from there. Um, enactment of the bill would set the stage for the eventual rollout of an expensive statewide voucher program, adding tuition and transportation outlays. House Bill 1800 is estimated to cost the Harrisburg School District five-point-five to eight-point-five million dollars. Our district could be next. Once this bill is reported out of the House Education Committee, it's expected to be pushed on to the House floor. Please contact your representatives immediately and tell them to reject vouchers and vote no on this bill. This is just one more way that our representatives are trying to sabotage public education. Um, you need to call your legislator tomorrow, because Monday they're voting on this. It needs to be done tomorrow. Call your representative Brad Roy, tell him you are not in favor of it, and that you do not want your tax money going to a voucher, excuse me, a voucher program. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member remarks. Start the bottle over there.
You get to go first. Um, well, I would be remiss if I didn't start out by saying what everyone else has said, uh, my condolences to Brian Geisweit's family, uh, friends, relatives, everybody. Um, I, I only knew Brian for a year, but I was fortunate enough to know him for that year. What a great guy, what a great role model, what a great person for the community. He will be missed, and that's not just something people say, especially in this case. What a great guy. Um, I guess I would like to thank, well, I'm sure I would like to thank Maplewood for the great goodies they had back there, they had cookies and some finger foods, and, uh, very delicious. Um, they always treat us really well out here. Excellent. Uh, I guess the last thing would be, uh, congratulations to the, the fall athletes for, uh, good season, and good luck to the winter athletes as they begin next week, I believe. Thank you.
Um, first of all, congratulations to all our fall sports athletes on some pretty amazing seasons we had. Sagertown girls volleyball made it out of districts to the state tournament, Cambridge cross-country had a, a great season, Maplewood football had a historic season, probably the best team since 1984, when I was a senior. Um, I know, I don't want to hurt myself. Um, our student press, um, they're being amazingly active, winning awards, moving on to the state level, and they put together great candidates for them, I'd like to thank them for that, and good luck to all the winter athletes who are just now getting ready for the upcoming season. I'm looking forward to, uh, winter sports. Um, I'm humbled and grateful to our schools for the amazing Veterans Day celebrations throughout the district. I've been attending the one at Sagertown for quite a while, and it, it's really one of my favorite events of the year, and thank you for asking me to speak this year. Um, I'd like to give my sympathies out to Brian Geisweit and his family, he's someone that I always thought would be back on the board at some point in time. Um, I have no doubt that if he'd filled his petitions out correctly, he'd be on, uh, he'd have been re-elected this year. He worked tirelessly or tiredly, because he would get up and work for twelve hours before he would come here. Um, my sincerest sympathy goes out to his entire family and everyone who knew him. Um, keep your eyes open for upcoming fundraisers to benefit his family in a time of need. Jerry and Jason, you guys have both been amazing to serve with, um, you both bring very different perspectives to the school board, but you've always put our schools and our students first. There's no one on the board with as much institutional knowledge as you two, we're all gonna have to work a little bit harder to make up for you guys leaving. Um, I'm gonna miss Jerry's humor, and I'm sad that I'm never gonna hear Jason whisper sarcastic comments again during a school board meeting. Both of you will continue to be assets to our district beyond serving on the school board. The last thing I'd like to address, that I feel I have to address, are some flyers that were mailed out during the election. Um, I'd asked the newspaper to address them. I, there were the flyers sent out by some cowards that are too afraid to own their own actions, they called me a socialist. Um, the flyer's filled with lies, it's been denounced by myself, my Republican Party, the Democratic Party, even the socialist organizations these idiots pretended to be when they mailed out the flyer. This flyer's led me to be threatened in person, my family's been accosted, and I'm still receiving mail thinking I'm a socialist, and that the district itself is being run by socialists, and that is a bunch of garbage. It's illegal, it's a selfish act of stupidity that hurts our district, hurts our students, and misinforms our most vulnerable residents about what's happening in our schools. I did contact the local newspaper about doing an article on the false flyer, they declined, so this is really my only chance to refute the letter and state no uncertain terms, I had nothing to do with the flyer, the flyer was a fraud, and I'm sorry, people are so upset with the progress we're making as a district, they feel the need to personally attack me, and okay with damaging the entire district to do so. Should the authors ever feel the need to crawl out of the gutter and address me personally versus hiding like cowards, I am always available, and I'm very easy to find. Our district is moving forward, I think that there's great things happening, and I look forward to serving with the new board. Thank you.
I'd like to offer condolences to the Geisweit family, uh, it's always a surprise to lose somebody that young, especially, uh, family. Just wanna keep them in our prayers. Like to congratulate the, uh, fall athletes for their accomplishments this year, and the inductees at the, uh, old tech, that's pretty awesome for us to have in large number like, uh, and, uh, looking forward to the, to the winter sports, good luck guys and girls.
All right, well, uh, first off, happy Veterans Day, good lady, I guess, but I want to thank all our veterans out there, veterans on the board here, uh, thank you for all your service and sacrifices. Also included in that, I'd also like to thank all of the first responders.
Also included in that, I'd also like to thank all the first responders. They do an awesome job. Cross-country runners, all fall sports, of course, but cross-country is my favorite. Those guys did awesome, but all the fall sports were really impressive this year. Well, they're always impressive, but proud of all of them. And, well, Jason, Jerry, well, Jason, I am going to miss hearing all the remarks. They get to hear them firsthand. Jerry, thank you for all your service and I wish Brian was here to thank him because he did a fantastic job. He was a very humble person. He cared and he did put the students first. I don't care what anybody else said. Pencrest was his first priority and his love for Maplewood was very, very strong. The National Honor students, awesome job. Man, it's awesome to hear Pencrest had the most students there. Very, very happy and very proud of them. And I tell you, the student press, they put on the Meet the Candidate forum back in, correct me, October, I can't remember the dates, but, and our students were the most professional I have seen in my short political career. They did a fantastic job. I've been to a couple tribute forums and but hands down, our students were top-notch. Sagertown, Maplewood, and Cambridge, all of them did a fantastic job. Very proud of them. And I guess just touch on what Jeff said, that we will be having a benefit for Brian. Everybody watch Facebook and we'll be texting administrators and everything, keep everybody posted on that. So thank you.
All right. Well, so my message changed a little bit here. I'm going to go on about a few things. I guess my message tonight is to the new board members and the board members that are still staying here. I only knew Brian for a year. Now, I've seen Brian in and around Meadville, stocking chips at Walmart at six o'clock in the morning, his truck going by at four o'clock in the morning. He's a hard worker. I'm a hard worker. You guys, he just kind of passed in the night. But if anything, anybody can take from him is he came on this board with more knowledge about kids than I have after eight and a half years. He spent ten years, from my understanding, as PTO and just talking to people that come into the restaurant, people that work for me, kids or grandkids. They were all, he touched every one of them at these schools in one way or another. And so, I mean, to the, to the new board members, that's, that's what you want to use Brian as your, as a guide because he was incredible first when he came to that. I want to thank Pencrest for, you know, eight plus years of what sometimes is good times, sometimes is not so, such a good time. Good decisions, bad decisions, but each and everybody that I've worked with or sat with has taught me something. I hope I've taught them something. You know, Jeff, they moved me over here because I talked too much to you over there. So they said it was because Luigi had a small bladder, but I don't, I don't believe that at all. But anyway, thank you, guys. I appreciate you, as taxpayers elect, you know, electing me to, to do this. It's an honor and, you know, I will miss it. So, thank you.
Thank you to Pencrest for six years. I can do this without crying. Congratulations to the fall athletes. Kids did fantastic. It doesn't matter which campus you were at, the kids did fantastic. We have a state qualifier in Sam Hetrick for cross-country. Yay, cross-country. The winter sports, I wish them all the very best. To the teachers, thank you, thank you, thank you. To the support staff, thank you. Get on with it. I guess that's the best way to put it. Move on. To Brian's family, he should be right here. His only agenda for this board was kids. And if you knew Brian, that was him. Hands down, it was kids. And he said when he got on this board, he was here for kids. That is why we all are elected, is to be here for kids. That should be our first agenda. It should be our only agenda, making the kids our first priority. And I hope the new board members check their agendas in the parking lot so that this board continues to move forward in a positive light, so that this district continues to grow. Thank you all very much.
I don't, I don't have anything to add. I mean, obviously, I just want to extend my sympathies to Brian's family and friends and everything. I mean, like Jerry said, he was, he was a good guy. I only knew him for a year and like she said, his agenda was the kids. I mean, everybody says, I don't have an agenda. Brian, his agenda was the kids. I mean, that's all he cared about. And in his board member remarks at the end of every meeting, I mean, he thanked PTO, he thanked people that volunteered. That's all he cared about. He, he didn't get too wrapped up in any of the politics or anything like that. He was here for the kids and really that's, that's all he cared about. And we should all be like that. Jerry, or Jerry and Jason, some days I, I would like to say congratulations for not being on the board anymore. You are going to be missed. Jason, you provided some really good leadership when you were president and Jerry, you've done a great job. For the new board members, welcome aboard. Like Jerry said, you know, you should try and be like Brian, here for the kids. That's why we're here. Everybody hit on cross-country. They did a great job. My kids are in cross-country and man, I don't get that sport. I mean, why? Why do you want to just run? I just don't get it. That's, that's all there is, is running. But anyway, on a lighter note, you know, usually when we come to schools, they, they give us gifts like a mug or candy. Maplewood, you guys stepped it up. I mean, these are really nice. I mean, I, I don't even know what to say. This is just, wow.
Well, I thought you were going to, kudos to the Oreo truck. You want to talk about this? That's fine.
Anyway, public, I'm just kidding. These aren't ours to keep. Just a joke, just a joke. And really, that's all I have. Anything else?
Executive session, we met November eleven and fourteen for personnel. That's all I have.
All right. Motion for adjourn. All in favor?